Tonight's flag salute will be led by the McLean High School JROTC under the direction of Lieutenant Darwin Sellers. Please stand as we prepare for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the posting of colors.
And then also attendance and behavioral information for them in a very parent-friendly way, just trying to get a lot of resources to teachers and principals that save them a little bit of time in their day-to-day work. So for parent-teacher conferences or something of that nature, that's one highlight, but would love to come back and share kind of more in-depth what that looks like.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, and thank you, Mr. Fedor, for that presentation. And we'll move on to item G9. This is a recommendation to issue warrants to Tulsa, Osage Creek, and Wagner Counties for the district's share of visual inspection costs for the 2017-2018 school year. The cost of inspections will not exceed $708,545.48. The cost of inspections during the 2016-2017 school year was $684,836.94. The district is required by state statute and by a court decision to pay our prorated share of any visual inspection budget the county excise board approves for the county assessor's office. And we have Alberto Del Godillo, who is our chief financial officer, available to answer any questions board members may have about this item. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Sorry. I, could you share with me, maybe I've just, I've not caught up on this on the past, but what the visual inspection is exactly, just at a basic level?
Yeah, so essentially what it is, is the county assessor identifies certain aspects of the county itself, so not necessarily Tulsa property, but just property as a whole across the county. And what they do is actually start assessing properties to get a sense of their real estate value. So they statistically identify areas throughout the county, pick blocks, and then just go through it methodically, assessing the buildings and their value.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Shelton. Thank you, Mr. Del Godillo. Moving on, items G10 through G13 are bond items, and they'll be presented by our executive director of bond projects, Mr. Chris Hudgens. Mr. Hudgens?
Thank you, Dr. Gist, President Schreiber, and board members. Item G10 is to approve the purchase of energy management equipment from HKS Solutions, and this is for district-wide, replacing our existing INET systems that we currently have. Item G11 is approve the supplement number eight with cross-link construction. They're going to be the construction managers on two of our summer projects, which includes McKinley and Disney interior renovation. Item G12 is also a construction manager, the Trigon Construction Managers for Construction Management at Anderson Elementary and Interior Renovation for this upcoming summer. And G13 is to improve allied engineering for the engineering services for HVAC renovation at Owen and Kendall Whittier. All these are part of our 2015 bond issue. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudgens. And our final item tonight is G14. This is a recommendation to purchase upgraded data services from Cox Business Services out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. This would be effective December 4th, 2017 through June 30th, 2018, to increase the speed of data services at the Roosevelt site. The cost will not exceed $1,645, which is an increase of $805, and will be charged to the applicable general fund account. The upgrade will increase the network connection speed to the Roosevelt site from five megabytes per second to 50 megabytes per second. And we have Mr. Blaine Young here to answer any questions board members might have about this item.
Is 50 the typical speed at other locations?
It is for the type of services that are running across that connection. So this isn't running the same kinds of applications that our, our schools do, but it provides the services for security monitoring and cameras and things of that nature.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Young. And that concludes our presentation of information items tonight.
So we'll move right into staff reports. Are there, is there a staff report this evening, Dr. Gist?
We do have a staff report this evening. And our chief learning and talent management officer, Devin Fletcher, on behalf of the, the team, is presenting a talent management staff report. This is a, an update review of where we are at this point in the year for this school year on, on talent management. And we have a video and then certainly are available to have a discussion or answer any questions as that may be useful. Mr. Fletcher?
Thank you. And we have Coy Nesbitt in the audience, and so just wanted to give him a huge shout-out for the work that he's done on supporting the team and pulling this together, along with, with the other talent management members of our team.
I agree, Mr. Fletcher. And I, Coy just was, when you said that, just looked down like he was gonna, he's busy working, I think. But just, now he's smiling. Okay, so wave, everybody say hi, Coy. Thank you for your hard work on this. Really appreciate everything you're doing to help us in these difficult times of attracting and retaining talent here in the district. Our team is doing a remarkable job. So thank you for that and for helping to pull the report together tonight. Mr. Fletcher?
So we'll start and kick off with the video and then do a few wrap-up comments and then take questions if there are any.
Over the last year, talent management has focused on attracting, developing, and retaining Tulsa Public Schools workforce.
I know that they're serious about keeping teachers.
Because without that support, I don't think I would be here.
Talent management is doing this while state funding has continuously declined.
This state has got a crisis.
Forcing the state's second-biggest school district to find new ways to ensure teachers get the supports they need.
The amount of training and opportunities that are available to new teachers, I think, are unparalleled at other districts.
Without a statewide teacher pay raise in years, many educators are leaving Oklahoma for more money.
Not being able to hire teachers or find teachers is not a problem of TPS. It's a problem of the state.
I think that the teachers that have left this building or left this profession in particular are simply hearing all the negativity about teaching in our state and saying, if it's going to be that difficult, I want it to be as easy for me as I can.
The amount of teachers that left the district rose by 6% between the 16-17 school year and the 17-18 school year, meaning 171 more instructional staff had to be hired this year than last.
This past year, though, was kind of difficult. And I really think it has to do with what happened in the state and what's continuing to happen in the state.
Making hiring teachers for Will Rogers' principal, Nikki Dennis, a priority that consumed her summer.
Postponed my vacations so that I could be here all summer to hire teachers.
Making matters worse, the supply of new teachers in Oklahoma doesn't meet the hiring needs for the district.
If we did not have the barriers reduced to allowing those to come in that don't have a teaching background, we would still have vacancies.
District staff has worked to open up the pipelines for new teachers.
TPS did a great job with the recruitment fairs. I sat in on a lot of those.
Eleven recruiting events brought in nearly 600 hiring leads. More than 1,000 phone calls and several thousand emails helped to build relationships with candidates. Initiatives, Dennis says, are extremely helpful.
TPS has found many inventive ways to help principals find teachers, and that's a big support of principals.
This year, the district took on more than double the emergency-certified teachers than last year. And if the trends continue, we could expect traditionally-trained teachers to be the minority by 2024.
So when you have 11% of your staff emergency-certified, that means 11% of your staff have never written lesson plans. They've never taken a class in behavior management. They've never taken a class on instructional strategies.
Meaning that many of the hires are eager to teach but lack experience.
Brand-new teachers, usually first-year teachers, are really hungry and looking for opportunities.
But now 58% of new hires are novices with less than two years of experience.
We know that we lose most of our talent in the first three years, and now the majority of our talent is in that first three years.
So retaining those novice teachers has become critical to Nathan Hale Junior High principal, Jody Parsons.
What we do is provide resources, coaching, the same for all new teachers, whether you're emergency-certified or went through a teacher-training program, the support looks the same.
It's that training that is making the difference for many novice teachers in the district.
They have the professional development trainings that help new teachers, and the teacher mentors and coaches, they're also wonderful, too.
Molina Jong is in her second year at Emerson. She's teaching fourth grade after stepping away from a career as a paralegal.
I think TPS having that support is a wonderful thing. And I, I hope that they don't change that because new teachers need that mentor and that, you know, the coach, the principals, and all that assistance and support.
Support-second-year teacher John McCoy also greatly values.
They really gave me some really practical things that I could use that really helped me hone my skills and think of some new ways to do things are really helpful.
He teaches seventh-grade geography at McLean. The supports he has received have helped him craft his approach.
Like how to set up my room, how to start class, how to transition, yeah, lesson plan, how to really make those as clear and concise as possible.
Making a huge difference for him and the other novice teachers at his school.
Mostly, it's either first or second year here.
Which makes the support all the more critical, one of the reasons some novice teachers are choosing to stay.
That checking-in contact makes it really helpful to keep me here because I didn't think I would be able to do it.
While it's extremely beneficial to new teachers, it's hampering principals' ability to support more experienced ones.
When the teaching pool is shallow, it's not that the people I'm hiring are necessarily going to be bad teachers. It's just they need a lot of support to become good teachers.
And unfortunately, many teachers are leaving before they reach their fourth year.
My fear is that we're not going to get past having the majority of people in the zero-to-three years. We're not going to be able to retain them past that.
It's been even harder for the district to attract and retain teachers of color, even though the student population is very diverse.
Unfortunately, there's not as much diversity as I, I wish there was.
As the district moves forward, attracting and retaining teachers of color is a top priority for Tulsa Public Schools, even though the lure of a better life seems to be waiting in neighboring states.
You're going to go to places that offer a lot of money and benefits.
Still, for the teachers that remain, it's a call to action.
I've heard several people say that have been hired that aren't career teachers, that have made a career switch. If I don't do this, who's going to?
Not willing to leave their students.
It'd be something that I'd be, I'd be kind of giving up. And I can't, I can't do that to the kids.
And wanting to be a positive leader while the state continues to gamble on quality education.
Education in Oklahoma is not going to get better if good teachers keep leaving.
Having quality teachers in the classroom is a community issue.
The district now aims to take steps to even better train novice teachers, implement systems and policies to attract and retain more highly-effective teachers with a focus on educators of color while reducing attrition district-wide.
To reduce suspensions, to increase attendance, to increase performance on the MAP assessments, you don't do that in a zero-to-three-year period of time typically.
Building upon successes to keep the district's schools as close to fully staffed as possible.
My career has something that I feel like is going to be really important to the future of our state.
I want to be here, so unless they move me somewhere else, I plan to stay here.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, and everyone on your team for pulling that information together for the board. I also want to say thanks to Emma Garrett Nelson, Marty Casper, and those on the communications team for supporting your work and sharing the presentation.
Thank you. Some of the key highlights that you pulled out, or that were pointed out here is that, you know, while we've, you know, overcome quite a bit in terms of the number of applicants increased, completed applications being completed, the overwhelming majority of our, our new teachers being satisfied with the supports that they received through, that are provided through our novice teacher team, there are still some challenges that exist. And some of the key challenges really relate to the fact that we are losing the majority of our teachers during their first of year one through year three. And a large part of that is due to lack of support in the classrooms. And so for us, what we're really focusing on is really building out opportunities to train and support our teachers, knowing that the pipeline of teachers that we're getting are coming in from emergency-certified more, more rapidly than traditionally-trained programs, that we've got to bolster the support for quality of teaching, not only at the novice one-to-three years, but beyond. But much more of our emphasis really has to be placed at the first three years, and we've got to shift our supports there. And then improving our opportunities to sustain through building more robust culture. There is an excitement and a joy that exists in, in the district. When we talk to our novice teachers, they're, you know, given all of the obstacles and challenges that we hear about, the narrative around Oklahoma and the state, our teachers are committed to doing the work for students. And so our role is to figure out how we better support. And so our team, we've got a dedicated group of coaches. They are a small army, but an effective one, and we're continuing to think of ways to expand our reach and potentially navigating and creating an opportunity for those coaches to support more specifically just novice teachers because of, we know that that's going to be extremely critical for us to get over this hump. Ms. Shelton?
Ms. Shelton? Our novice, sorry, our novice teachers, zero-to-three years, is that how we define that?
Zero to three years.
And they said 58% of our new hired teachers are novices. What percent of our total teaching force are novice teachers?
I'm going to look at Coy for that.
How many of our?
Previously, about a third.
It's about one-third, and I have the specific numbers, it's not in this stat.
We can get you a specific number.
Dr. Decker?
Thank you for this great presentation. I got to go through it in very great detail in a committee meeting. But I did have one final question. In 1617, we had a district goal focused on novice teacher retention, and I didn't see that specific number in here, so I was just wondering what that was.
Yes, we did not meet our goal for novice teacher retention for this, this past year, which we wanted to ensure that we retained an additional, or 96.8% of our novice teachers, and we missed that goal by a couple of percentage points. We were close. And given the, you know, the, the narrative during the spring around budget cuts and other things like that, we, we did have an uphill battle. We are committed to continuing to try to reach and attain that goal, our, and our setting goals for this upcoming year that would hold us consistent with the prior year.
That's great, and I love the focus on supports, especially as so many are new, but also so many are emergency-certified.
I don't know that the, everybody is looking at the same PowerPoint presentation that we have, but we have copies if anyone is interested. But I think it's really startling to note that our TPS's demand alone would account for nearly half of all the teachers prepared in ESL Science and Special Education statewide. So everybody coming out of school, we need half of those to serve here in our district. And that just highlights how troubled the whole ecosystem is. It's everything from, as we, starts at the, either you want to think of the top or the bottom of the food chain with the failure to invest, causing people to not choose that profession, causing people to not study that, causing the shortage, and just cause this cycle that feeds on itself. And I would only dispute one thing in the video. I think the term was, as the state continues to gamble on public education, I, I don't think it's a gamble. There is no win for the failure to invest in public education. It is going to be, and currently is causing severe damage. And if we don't change course, it's going to continue to be a loss for all of our children in Oklahoma.
I think that's an important point that you raised, that data point about Tulsa alone needing half. And I'll just add that that's assuming that all of those teachers who are prepared in Oklahoma stayed in Oklahoma, and we know that they do not, that we are losing our teachers coming out of our colleges of education to other states at a, at a, an unbelievable pace. The data point that I heard last year was more than 90% of the students graduating from the University of Oklahoma College of Education were leaving for Texas. So it is a, a very, very serious issue, and I thank the board for your advocacy and, and other supporters in Tulsa for making our voices heard about the need to make sure our teachers are receiving a competitive wage so we can turn the tide. I think the other important data point in there that is pretty stunning is the, the fact that we would have, it was by 2024, that the majority of teachers would be non-traditionally certified, which to Principal Dennis's point means that they don't have the same kind of preparation by far. And they can be awesome teachers, and many of them are incredible teachers, but the amount of support that they need to be successful exceeds what the district is able to provide, even with everything we're investing, which is, by the way, being done with largely private fundraising that we've done from local and national philanthropy to help us get that done.
Ms. Fait?
Oh, I'm very honored to be part of his committee, where we meet monthly. And I can tell you personally, with us reviewing every month what they're doing, I am amazed at what they've been able to do with what we have, what we have at, at our hands. So I thank you for everything that you and your committee have been doing.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Fletcher, what are some of the strategies we're using to recruit more educators of color?
So one of the things, and before I jump into that, I want to make sure I correct something. Dr. Decker, you asked the question about novice teacher retention or goal. It was 76.8%, and we were at 68.8%. So just wanted to make that point of correction and clarification. We're doing a couple of things, Ms. Shelton. We are, one, beefing up our recruitment at historically-black colleges and universities, and really beginning to think about more strategic recruiting in those areas. We've visited locally, like Langston University, but have gotten an opportunity and have been invited to go to places like Prairie View A&amp;M. We're thinking about New Orleans, so you've got Dillard and Xavier. And, and the reason why we're targeting those areas, they're similar in terms of cost of living to Tulsa, and we provide comparable salaries and creating an opportunity for folks from a value proposition to come here and lead. And, and so unlike other environments, I think Tulsa as a city, being highly ranked in terms of, you know, a great place for entrepreneurs, the ability to own homes, we're really shifting our strategy in terms of the things that we present in a package that entice people to come here. And so if you think about Tulsa collectively, it's a great place, and we've got to do a better job at selling that. The other thing is giving candidates of color opportunity to meet with other candidates who are, or other employees that are here. We've heard feedback and, and really being able to make a, a personal connection, not only to leaders but to other teachers, and not just teachers of the same race, but it's teachers in general, because that personal relationship means so much when coming to a new place and grounding here. And then we're thinking about how we leverage our, our talent that exists in our classrooms. And so thinking about, you know, our students who come in as language learners and have, you know, leave multilingual, our students of color who have graduated our high schools and are going off to Oklahoma colleges or surrounding areas and trying to bring them back, doing that through, I think, paraprofessionals, leveraging them as paraprofessionals where they can work and earn wages while they're in school, but also being really diligent in terms of giving them access to what the teaching profession holds prior to them leaving, leaving Tulsa Public Schools as a student. And it's been successful in other places, so we're definitely ramping up our, our work there.
That's exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fletcher. I think those are some really compelling examples, and it's, and they are just examples. Our team is doing so much. I would add that Teach for America helps us tremendously with recruiting diverse candidates and then paraprofessional to teacher route as well. So there are a number of different things that our team is doing with your leadership, Mr. Fletcher, so thank you.
And we're also working closely with City Year as well. I left that one out. And really, that's another pipeline for us to engage talented students of color into our district and leaders of color.
Okay, that concludes our staff report, correct? You, okay, just wanted to be sure. Thank you, board members, for your engagement there, and thanks again to the team for all your amazing work. And again, to everyone who cares about education in Oklahoma and Tulsa specifically, we need your help. We have to make sure our teachers are receiving competitive salaries, and it's going to take all of us making our voices heard and advocating on their behalf to really turn this around and do what we need to do on behalf of our entire city and our children and teachers specifically.
That brings us to board member reports and concerns. Are there any board member reports this evening? Dr. Decker?
I just wanted to share that last week, there was a ribbon-cutting for the Edison Band Room. Mr. Hudgens was there, as was, of course, Ms. Dixie Spear, the principal. The students are just so thrilled with the new space. The room had been completely way too small for the many instruments and the many children, which is a wonderful problem to have, but they were truly falling over one another and instruments falling down, too. So the, the excitement in the room and the wonderful video that was shared, all the students saying thank you to, of course, all of our, all of our taxpayers in our community for this money, but also to, to us for making these decisions. So I just wanted to share this really wonderful news.
And that was a repurposing of a swimming pool, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other board member reports? Ms. Fait?
Well, that reminds me that, and particularly seeing Jody Parsons from Hale Junior High on TV, on the screen, is they had, I did not know this, but November is Do Not Shave Month for men. So they had a beard-growing contest at Hale Junior High because they have so many men teachers. And they had a reception and invited several people to come. And the gentlemen all stood there with their little jars with the slots in it where you could drop money in. And there was quite a variety of beards and mustaches and, anyway, it was a fun morning to, to get to see these, these gentlemen raising funding for a gentleman who has cancer, who's one, from one of their support school, excuse me, a support church. And so that was what they were raising the funding for.
Always innovative at Tulsa Public Schools. I have two things to mention. One, I wanted to, sort of coming off of the talent management and teacher recruitment and retention, a few weeks ago, Guthrie Green held an event called SuperKid, and at the event, they did a drawing for Tulsa, a Tulsa Public School teacher for a $1,000 check. And they invited me to come and draw the name out of the barrel. And so I was able to do that. And the teacher who won was a woman from Florida. She came here via TFA, but she was in her third year of teaching, and she expressed that she loved Tulsa Public Schools. She loved her principal, and she hoped to have her for a mentor for a long time. And she was also able to buy a house through a specific program that helps teachers with 50% of their down payment. So there's a lot of great stories out there, and I gave her a big old hug from all of us. And it was just a great story to hear, especially, I thought it was pretty moving, what she said about her principal. So it was fantastic. I'm going to report out on our ad hoc committee that is evaluating the names of our schools and buildings quickly, or not as quickly as this meeting has been going, but it's an important report, so it may take a little longer. As you know, when we started the process of convening our community advisory council to dive into building understanding of our history, we knew that we were going to get into some complex work that might challenge our feelings and our beliefs and what we think we know about ourselves and our city. Even as we watched difficult and troubling events unfold throughout the country, we knew, we knew we needed to be intentional and thoughtful about how we move forward as an urban school district who serves predominantly students and families of color. It would have been easier to just be reactionary and try to make well-intentioned decisions that might not be as well-thought-out, but by bringing the community advisory council together, we're able to leverage sort of a moment in time, I would say, in America, to engage in critical and obviously difficult conversations around how the decisions, ideas, and biases of our past continue to impact our present and future. The community advisory had their third meeting, I think this was their third meeting this afternoon, and even on Thanksgiving week, there was more than 25 of members there, which I think is, is great. And they heard from a panel of community leaders who talked about what they think the council should know as they engage in research, research and discussion. and discussion around how and why our schools were named, and the panel included Brian Hosmer, who is the HG Barnard Chair and Associate Professor of Western American History at TU, Hannibal Johnson, distinguished author and consultant specializing in diversity and inclusion, Michelle Place from the Tulsa Historical Society and Museum, and Jill Webb, a local criminal defense and civil rights attorney. And Dr. Gist was able to report to me on some of the things that the group heard and wanted to share. I wanted to share a couple of the points that she made after participating in the meeting. The board does not attend the meetings. We do have an ad hoc committee that guides the work and receives information as it progresses, but what Dr. Gist noted was that the panel and the discussion concluded that, you know, it may seem obvious, but you have to say it out loud every once in a while, we can't separate ourselves from history, in that both taking in action and not taking in action are political statements, in that each of us and our historical figures are more than the worst things that we've done. So I think that's kind of a positive note coming out of that, so we have to remember that who we are today is kind of more than what wrongs have been committed in the past. I just want to express my, my and the board's thanks for the commitment and dedications of the, of the members of the community advisory council, and I know the board knows who those members are, and definitely, you know, when you see them, make sure and thank them because this is hard work, and we'll have another report from them in early '18. So looking forward to that, and really am grateful for the community advisory, this board, and also Dr. Gist and her staff for pushing on this moment and, and making us really stop and, and think about it, even though it wasn't sort of in what Dr. Gist would call our work plan for the year. It was something that we knew we had to do and stopped and made room for it and made it a priority, and I'm grateful to my fellow board members and the community advisory and Dr. Gist for being all in and being a part of that.
Yeah, thank you, President Schreiber, and I would echo the gratitude that we have for the board's leadership and also for the hard work of the community advisory council. I'll also just say thanks to Evita Fox, who's been supporting the, the council, as well as Tamara Laback, who is our facilitator of those conversations, along with Dr. Carlos Hill from the University of Oklahoma and Hannibal Johnson. And so that, that work has been moving along, and I, we did have a great meeting today. I also want to just point out that our communications team was there today. We want to be sure that the work of the council, while it is, while we want to give the council space to have these conversations, we also want to make sure that the broader public has a sense of how those conversations are progressing. So our communications team was there today and talking with some of the council members, and we'll have some information that the communications team will be sharing out so that we can help the community follow along with the progress as, as it goes. But this is something that they're taking very seriously, and it's an important body of work, so we're happy to, that it's moving along and looking forward to sharing that with the broader public.
Thank you, everyone. Given that there's no citizen comments this evening, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you again, Madam President. I just have a brief report tonight, actually. As you know, every spring, Tulsa Public Schools recognizes two exceptional team members as our Teacher of the Year and our Support Employee of the Year for the district. The Tulsa Public Schools Teacher of the Year represents Tulsa teachers locally as well as at the state level. So locally, they serve as an education advocate, as spokesperson, they are an advisor to, to us, and then statewide, they are, become a candidate for the Oklahoma Teacher of the Year, which is very exciting. The Tulsa Public School Support Employee of the Year needs to be a non-certified team member who embodies excellence and goes above and beyond every day in the service of Tulsa children, teachers, and families. So I'm sure you know that here at Tulsa Public Schools, we love to get different kinds of community input, and this process is no different from that. So we would love to have nominations from the community, and we're inviting all Tulsans to visit www.tulsschools.org/nominate to share nominations for Teacher of the Year and Support Employee of the Year. We will announce the winners in the spring of 2018. So the nomination form will open Friday, December 1st, and how long is it open? For two weeks. So it's open, oh, open until the 1st. So it's open now. Okay. So, to be clear, the nomination form is open now, and it will be open until December 1st. So we just ask board members and everyone who's participating in the meeting tonight to help us to spread the word, get as many nominations as we can, encourage friends and families to submit nominations for exceptional teachers and exceptional staff members who've made a difference in the lives of young people and in Tulsa as a whole, and there are lots of them. So we look forward to reading about those nominations. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Gist. Are there any, there are no nonroutine items this evening? And any new business, Mr. Wade? Thank you. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, December 4th, 2017, at 6:30 PM in the Cheryl Selman Room at the Education Service Center, 3027 South New Haven Avenue, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy your family and friends. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelton.
Aye.
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 Aye. Meeting adjourned.